I'm Maury Pete's King, serving Rockville since 1972. Dine in, carry out, or drive up window. Come and see us. Thank you, Rockville, for 50 years of business.
I don't want to disturb y'all. We'll get started.
He does, he does.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all. We have the minutes, so we'll have to table the minutes. Next, we have payroll. The amount, 189,696.96, that is correct? Laura?
Yes, that is correct.
I'll make a motion, we approve payroll, amount of $189,696.96.
And I'll second that, in my own favor, aye.
Aye.
Again, we need to acknowledge and receive the payroll claims, accounts payable in the report, in the amount of $83,291.76.
I'll make a motion, we acknowledge the receipt of the payroll claims, accounts payable, amount of $83,291.76. Payroll, aye.
I'll second that. Thank you, aye.
Okay, we go, that's all right.
You have a documents to be signed?
Okay, Chamber, courthouse lawn is Heather?
Yes, she's on here.
Well, this is the one we Jim sent SMS to John a few days ago, that the Chamber wanted to use the courthouse.
Yep, and I think we did.
We both responded.
We did all three, yes.
Yeah.
So, maybe Heather decided she didn't need to come, because Jim talked to her, maybe. All right.
But we still, I think formally.
Yeah, we might as well act on it.
Yeah, we need to formally approve it, even though Jim talked to us about that. So, I'll make a motion that we allow the Park County Chamber Commerce to use the courthouse lawn on September 24th, between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., for some kind of a business day. The various businesses that are members of the Chamber are going to set up tables and booths and stuff, kind of.
All right. I will second that, in my own favor, aye.
Aye.
Now, the extension office.
This is kind of the basic contract that they have every year, that they want me to approve, and I did send that contract over to Nick.
Did Nick respond, that he looked over it?
They assumed he looked it over.
But he didn't respond to it?
He didn't respond saying no to anything.
Let me, let me send him a text real quick here. It's a postage meter, I'm assuming we've had it out there before.
Yes, it's basically the same as what we've always had.
You know, if the amount went up, anything like that.
That, I didn't double check, I mean, dollar amount.
It's only $61.
Everything else is going up.
Jim was watching.
I think it's $61 from what I can tell, per quarter, or per month, I mean. What we used to pay for it, how somebody got money. Is there a budget?
The same thing, they have a budget, I have no problem approving. And they're just, if you didn't hear anything. Just.
I still, Nick looked at it, but.
Yeah, I, now, he's texting me right now. He said he'll be here within five minutes. So, we can skip over that a few more, and get back to that. We'll just check with him before we do anything with that, or we're going to skip it for now. Let's deal with the DNR, spare hardware.
This is when they got that permit number, too?
Yes, which has nothing to do with us, really, they're just notifying us, it's through the DNR, so. 45449 is a permit number. The final issue date, just letting us know that it's been done. Okay, and we also have a contract with the Health Department.
And Nick did look over that, and Nick sent the contract to me, so with Nick sending the contract to me, I assume it'd be correct.
I suggest, I'm, is here too, because of the way I read it, this contract is for us to provide law enforcement officers.
That's what I read, too.
To Union Hospital Clinic.
Yeah.
I don't sure, and that's not in our jurisdiction, that's in Vermaillan County, but. I don't remember, so we're talking about.
No, I don't remember anything about that.
Steffing was here last meeting. Does she ever say anything about?
Nick's here, no?
All right. Totally just can't live without it, so he needs to be here.
They can't live without you, they're waiting on you.
Just about getting ready to cancel, oh yeah, we were just going to cancel.
Sorry, I was in Fountain County for court, and we ran late.
That's fine. Why didn't you tell the judge that you had other things going on?
We're in a public meeting, so I don't want to miss this.
The extension office contract.
I did read that.
We just passed that, Nick.
Yeah, one of the meter, postage meter, and we assume they've had it out there in the past, we've paid for it in the past, as long as they got money, but really, there's not much from a contract standpoint in there.
No, there wasn't.
As far as the language, so.
They had renewal language in there, and it wasn't alarming to me, but I don't remember if it was one year or three year.
Since the lease payment's for 63 months.
Oh, that's what it was, yeah, 63 months, so that's a five-year plus.
Yeah, yeah.
So, as long as you're okay with that.
This is pretty much same as most of them you can get out, if you notify them.
Um, it didn't have any language like that in it. It read like it was a straight 53, or.
63 months.
63 months. I remembered there was something about it that I want you to see, and that was it, so, 63 months. Our, I'll tell you, the ours for our law firms, exactly like that, it's a five-year, but.
They had no problem with it, Laura, you said it's the same as it was before, I don't have any problems with it.
It's been on a yearly basis, because I presented this to you before in the past, on a yearly basis.
So, that's the only thing that really caused me pause at all, would be the timeframe of it.
What do you think, Bruce? Well, you know, that's one of those, I talked about this on contract a few months ago, you just get yourself into a situation, if you sign a contract for five years, and the council doesn't appropriate the money.
Yeah.
Then we got situations where we can't legally pay the, yeah, we got a contract, and so you kind of like to go year to year, just to make sure you've got the budget to be able to.
When's the current contract run out, that we're under right now? Do you know that, Laura?
Um, no, I'm not exactly sure, we'd have to look, I'd have to look that up tomorrow in the office.
Do we want to get, whether we can do them yearly?
I would kind of recommend that we talk to, I can call Missy, and just ask her what they've done in the past, and then approve it at the next meeting.
All right.
We'll just.
Some of them offer a three-year, I know that. I don't know if they do it year to year or not, but I've seen a three-year.
All right, Bruce said you'll call her, so you'll have a decision.
And her email says, this is our annual posties meter agreement that needs to be signed by one of the commissioners. And it says in the email, annual posties, so I don't know if she's aware of.
It's five years, she may have almost looked at it, it's five years, it's an annual, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure she realized that.
Let Bruce talk to her, until the next meeting.
Yeah, because it's $61 a month for that many months, that's a substantial amount of money.
Yeah, it's not, per year, it's not all that much, but.
Ends up well over $4,000, and that we're committed to.
But we're not the council, and we don't know if they'll appropriate that next year, or the year after, or the year after, so.
Then the next thing, you had a question on, Nick was contracted since the Health Department, but it was, I don't understand, even remember talking about any of this for Sheriff's Department.
Oh, you guys probably haven't talked about this. This was something that I talked to Justin Cole about. I guess they'd been talking with Union Hospital about possibly providing services, security work, at the Clinton Hospital. Right now, Union Hospital utilizes Vermilion County and the city of Clinton, but they're offering it to Park County Sheriff's Department. And I did read this, and I had them add language to it in paragraph.
So, Justin actually brought this to you?
I was emailed by Union Hospital's attorney, indicating that this is something that Justin and Union Hospital talked about, and wanted me to review the contract. So, I reviewed it, and I sent it back to Justin, and asked him if that was something that he had been talking with them about, and he said, yeah, that's something we've been discussing. But Jason had texted me, indicating he couldn't be here tonight. I think he was going to attend in Justin's stead, but he can't be here tonight.
So, what's this going to do, is it going to shorten us with deputies, or is this going to be overtime, or?
So, it pays out at, seems like it's like $38 an hour.
$38 an hour.
Yeah. I had them add language, it was whole harmless language, indicating if they, if they had any claims against them for, you know, neglect, or intentional acts, or things like that, they'd hold us harmless, is what I added in paragraph 10. But as to rotation and the ability to man the hours, I, that'd be something that Jason or Justin would have to answer. I don't know the answer to that question.
So, I have a question, is the auditor's office going to pay this, or is the hospital going to pay this?
The hospitals, well, I think the hospital's paying it to the county, and then the county's paying it to them, is my recollection, but let me look.
I guess it says it.
Yeah, they're going to pay us, and then we're going to pay it to the.
They should compensate Park.
Yeah.
Which almost means to me that they would be paying it, Park County, for that.
Yeah, and then Park County would pay our employees, like we normally do.
I guess the best thing to do with this is not pressing, just wait until Justin can be here.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would like to hear from Justin or Jason. You think we got any jurisdictional things, I mean, this is.
No, not really, because we have statewide jurisdiction, the sheriff deputies do, they have jurisdiction in any county in the state of Indiana, same with the town officers. It's just, it's over and beyond like what our regular is, so it's similar to what the school contract is.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we provide at school, but that's within our own jurisdiction.
Sure.
Union Hospital was in Vermaillan County, that's why I was wondering if we had some jurisdictional issues.
No, we have jurisdiction throughout the state, the sheriff deputies do, it's just a matter of where they exercise it at.
Then on the school, the schools pay the officers directly, I don't.
This is different than that.
And that's one thing that makes me wonder there, too, at the fee, is it really going to be feasible by the time, if the county has to furnish fuel with a car back and forth, and is it going to shorten us on officers?
I, I don't have answers to those. I just looked at it for, you know, content-wise.
I would just assume, table, discuss it with him, I don't know what your opinion is, Bruce, but.
Yeah, I agree, I do, just, there's some holes there that we just need to.
If you're wanting it to be like the school is, then they'd have to pay it to the officers directly into 99 then, but this isn't set up that way. As I read, I read it, it's coming to the counter, and then going to the officers.
Yeah, which that part I'm not complaining about anyway, but I don't know where that could put us by the time we furnish a car, and is it going to shorten us on officers at any time?
I know some of the other ones pay out at like, I think the school pays out at like 22 or something, I think this is significantly more than what the school pays. But as far as shortening on officers, that.
Because we're doing it through payroll.
Right.
They're going to jump into overtime.
Yeah.
And that's what it says here, the hourly rate shall be based upon the specific contained officer's overtime pay rate. So, they're going to get a W-2, it's going to be part of payroll, the way I read this, and so it is totally different than what they.
Yeah, it is.
Because in the school situation, these officers are basically independent contractors, I mean, they do it on their time off, or their day off.
They're getting 1099 from the school director.
Yeah, whatever, you know, this almost looks like, okay, this is, Justin's going to have to figure this into their, okay, they work four hours here, and they work four hours over there, or whatever.
Yeah, I think there's a fair question, I didn't ask any of those to Justin, I just asked him straight, what was your intention, what were you wanting to do here?
I'll send a message, you can get done, say if you'll get to next meeting, and go from there. All right, I guess we're ready for small claims, what's your call on that?
That's one of the overpayments, it was roughly $1,000. I sent them a demand ledger, they haven't responded to, so I indicated to Laura that, really, I just need direction from you on proceeding to small claims, if that's what we want to do, to try to collect the overpayment.
Okay, so that's what you're recommending you do?
Otherwise, the county's eating that money, and that's probably not real for the taxpayers of the county, but.
Well, I think, yeah, we need to try everything we can, and if we're unsuccessful in small claims, or whatever, we may end up eating it anyway, but.
Not all small claims case pay out, I mean, it just depends on circumstances.
I just think we owe to the taxpayers to try and get back as much as we can.
Okay, so you may have a filing fee, I think I can probably get waived, so there might be just some service costs, like either certified mail or sheriff's service, but other than that, they'll just set it on the day of Maury there, anyway, so.
With that being said, then I make a motion, we give Nick the authority to file the paperwork necessary for the small claims for the unpaid back pay on an employee.
I'll second that.
In my own favor, aye.
Aye.
And I guess we have, I don't have any old business, there's none, I don't care, do you have anything, Bruce? I do not. Okay. Guess we're ready for Randy?
Because you got here early, Randy.
Yeah, it is. You had showed up, the lights have gone out. Yeah, I didn't know, Jim wasn't here. Just keep that in mind, but he's not here.
Well, I'll tell you, I did text Jim 30 minutes early, tell him I was going to be late, but I forgot he wasn't going to be here.
He just sent it to us, and said, hey, this is Nick, so. I just saw you down on 350, he's talking there, obvious gentleman, there, Byron.
Oh, yeah, in that key.
Yeah, I was coming through with wood shavings, I had just gone out to get wood shavings. Give that to Laura, please.
This is for community crossings.
Yep.
The estimate. It's a bit more than what we didn't get on our last one, but we'll try it, see if we can go through. If not, we'll just have to pay the rest of it. Comes the, County Road 200 North, $158,447.95. County Road 275 North is $131,045.70. 1200 North, going east from Bridge 205, there below, die, is $389, no, $10451.10, with a grand total of $389,944.75. Can't remember how much less than a million dollars we had, 200.
Yeah, I don't remember.
272,000 something, I believe it was. Seems like it.
It seemed like it was somewhere around 270 to 300,000 is what we had, but. But, you know, you want to get to a starting spot.
Yeah.
It's halfway decent, you know, so it goes over, and we get the council to go ahead and get the difference, and. But it's worth, again, in my opinion, it's worth going after. We can get up to a million dollars, and if we can get it, let's get what we can. They may say no, because we already got an earlier award, but. Let them say no.
That's right. Well, let's give you, guys, make a motion to, hopefully get this.
Okay.
Put in the process.
Buddy, we can get them somewhere else, that we can help with roads, I can. I'm all for it, so.
So, do you have anything you want to say?
I just need a list, one two days already.
So, I make a motion, we go ahead and approve the road projects submitted by Randy, to turn into the community crossings grant, and this will be the second one for the year, and that total is $389,944.70.
This is all second cap, in my own favor, aye.
Got it.
Had to put our paving on hold a little while we ran out of material, get some more material made, that lasts a month. How much do you have left? This pipeline road, Jessup Road. Then we'll be done for the, with that. Oh, yeah, there's only something to do. Oh, yeah, a lot of patching to go, we had.
Yeah, and they're coming back up again, in spots.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Off the heat of the summer is.
Lot of it.
Starting to let them tear up a little bit, but.
That's all I had, unless you folks have anything for me.
I had one phone call today for a cane, can't remember the gal's name, it's on 650 West, it's a section from Lambert up over the hill.
625 West?
Or 625, yes. She was complaining about how rough it was, and we don't know if we was going to resurface it, I told her that wasn't going to happen, and she was complaining about the brush, and I told her I'd come over and look at it. I traveled that way quite a bit, but at 1,000, I tried to go back north, and yet 900 would come out there.
Yeah, her husband, I talked to her husband on the phone, he was.
Well, she was too, she, she started out on that, and then she started on Indiana childcare, and I couldn't get a word in edgewise to explain to her, I had nothing to do with. I said, I raised my four kids, I don't have anything good childcare, and I can't help you there, so, but.
He was worried why we got them other roads paved.
Yeah.
See, somebody important lived on it, I said, nobody, nobody more important than what me and you are.
Yeah, I tried to tell her, I live on gravel road, it is what it is.
Yes.
But, anyway, that's pretty much all.
And there is some holes in that road.
Yeah, there, and I told her, you know, we're not going to ignore it, but I know it's something going to get blacked out, but I said, I'm going to be honest with you, it's not going to get blacked out right now.
There's a lot more, and a lot worse shape, heavier traveled roads.
Yeah.
And losing another employee.
All right.
Yeah. He's on some other job, pays $39 an hour, which I can't blame you for that.
Oh, you can't.
They ain't losing him, he's a good employee.
Driver.
Driver, he can do anything, I mean, he don't care.
Yeah.
Interviewed two more this morning, so give them a start date, see if they show up or not. Well, hopefully they will.
Yeah.
I'll tell. Is that it?
Well, have a good evening.
Okay, you too.
Thanks, Randy.
Say, I'm trouble.
All right.
It's no fun, but safer. Anybody else have anything?
Hamilton Center presented last, presented in June, and you asked for us to present quarterly, so I don't know if you would like to put it on the agenda for next month?
Pardon?
Hamilton Center presented last in June, you asked for us to come back quarterly, and I didn't know if we should be put on the agenda for next month.
Um, I don't have you on the agenda, but you, you want to go and speak to.
I have no problem, Jim had made a comment.
Jim wants you to, so.
Yeah, Jim had made the comment, he would like to know, no matter what's going on.
Somebody was here last meeting, if I remember right, a gentleman was here last meeting, and he reported it, he was just here, and Jim made the comment to him, if I remember right, to come back in a month or so, and do a presentation, so.
Yeah, so if you want to put her on the agenda, whatever works for you, or if you want to get with Laura, look at your schedule, it's always, of course, first Monday and third Monday.
So, the first Monday is a holiday, is that?
So, it would be a Tuesday.
The day after Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Okay, that works for me, if that works for you.
You want it on the next agenda, that would be great.
It would be the day after Labor Day.
Anyone else have anything, you ladies? Nothing?
I do have something.
You want to put in?
So, I've got some issues with longevity. I've got a couple people that had quit shortly, like one was just within a couple weeks, and they would like to know if they would be able to qualify to get their longevity paid. Then I had another one that quit less than six months, I think about three or four months, who's gone. These are county highway employees, and they're wanting to know if I could reinstate them on the longevity paid.
So, they're employed again now, after having quit?
Yes, yes, one had just quit, like within, he was only left the county for maybe two, three weeks at most.
So, they're wanting the commissioners to reinstate their prior time?
Yes, because we have done that with previous employees.
What's, have you looked at the personnel policy? Is there anything in the personnel policy that talks about that?
It says if they leave their job, that they don't get the, if they break employment, they don't get the longevity, but we've had other employees that's came to the commissioners' meeting, and the commissioners have reinstated them.
Did they quit their job, or did they switch? Did they quit their job or did they switch from one job to another?
They left the county for a different job and then they came back and then Randy rehired them back. Kind of like the sheriff's department, we've had a couple of them at the sheriff's department that has left and then came back and we reinstated them. And then we had one at the ambulance that had left for, and only worked maybe during covered birds festival, it's the only time they worked. And they left in two fifteen and rehired in twenty nineteen and they got the seventeen years of longevity pay. So then I'm hearing that the sheriff's department has another employee that's not going to be in, being paid out as an employee, so he's got six months and if he returns in six months, he'll get the longevity pay. So where do we stand? Where does the auditor's office stand on the payroll to give them the longevity pay?
I guess as far as I'm concerned, I would go with the policy, that's what I prefer.
I, I'd have to read the policy again, I think it indicates, a lot of them, and I'm not done necessarily off the top of my head what the county one does, but a lot of them indicate a period of time they have to be gone for it not to reinstate, but I don't know if that's what the county one says or not, I'd have to read it.
I'll be honest with you, I don't ever remember us ever voting on anybody getting their longevity pay back.
I don't either.
Yes.
I do remember voting on some different things with employees, a special, uh, vacation when they can't use their vacation because of the COVID. I remember us doing those kind of things, but I don't ever remember any longevity issues that we've ever.
We have, but I don't want to state their names if they're leaving right now.
No, no. Well, no, but if you can find the minutes of, of those instances, I like to see it, 'cause I don't remember ever approving somebody to come back and being picked up their longevity, but that being said, policies are policies, that's why we have policies, okay? And we need to, to be consistent with our policies because it's not fair to this employee if we do, well, we've stated that one, but we don't reinstate this one. Policies are policies, and the sheriff's one you're talking about, you sent us that just this afternoon, okay? So we really haven't had a chance to even look at it or discuss, but, so.
But the ambulance one was in the commissioners meeting July the first, twenty nineteen.
I don't remember anything on longevity.
But you're right, exactly what you just said, it's not fair to one, one employee to the other, 'cause that's what your other employees are looking at, exactly what you just said.
I think what we need to do is go back through the minutes, because I think I do remember voting on rehiring.
Yeah, I think we maybe.
But we did not, I never remember voting on giving them their, that just re, letting them come back to work, was all after they quit.
Yeah, I'll be more glad to send you copies of those minutes tomorrow to all of you.
Can you send me the longevity pay part that you're looking at too?
Yeah.
In the policy?
Yeah.
And did you get her email? You, I, you were in court, but did you get your email on the sheriff's department situation?
I haven't seen it. I, I'm aware of what was going on, but I, I don't know what they ultimately did.
But regards insurance.
The only reason I'm bringing up is I've had some complaints from some other employees at the highway that.
Yeah, as, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm on that email.
And I said, that's a commissioner's decision on one?
As far as now, we'll go by the policy until, we, let Nick look it over and make a decision, like I said, I don't remember that part I did in there. I think I have more about that. Right, but that was the only thing I.
Probably also paint the longevity.
I don't remember that if they.
For financial. Smallfirm.net.
Anything else, if you have more?
Did you have anything else? Is that all you had until we have time to?
Yeah, that's all I got, I can, I can send you, I can send everyone the documentations that we've had in the past, so you know what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's fine, send it. Well, she's done, man, and if nobody else had anything, I make a motion, we adjourn, second that.